Here we go. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the September fourteenth regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If you could join me and rise, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up on our very administrative agenda tonight is the approval and discussion of the minutes of the regular meeting of August tenth. Discussion or motion?
I'd make a motion. We accept those meet, those.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Selectman Zarovsky, if you could give us a community relations and announcements, please.
Here we go. E-Waste and Tire Take Back Event. It's September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, between eight and twelve P. M. at the D. P. W. Complex at one eighty-five Galport Road in Southbridge, Mass. That information is also on our website at www.townofcharlton.net. We have all boards, departments, commissions, committees, town meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-first at six P. M., and that's gonna take place. It's senior center. Household hazardous waste and electronic collection is Saturday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and that's from nine to one P. M. at Casella Waste Services Facility at one sixty-five Bearford Road in Southbridge, Mass. That information is also available on our town website, and the free vouchers are viable at the Board of Health Office. Now, are you interested in learning more about our government and how it works? The Board of Selectmen have several openings on boards and committees that you might be interested in. All that information is on our website as well. We will be thrilled and very, very happy to see more people getting involved in the town, especially now with everything that is going on. We have the opening on the Board of Assessors, one member. Boston Post King Committee, one member. We have Cultural Council, three members openings. We have Historical Commission, Historic District Commission, three members would be appreciated. Personal Board, five members. W. R. T. A. Advisory Board, two members, and a Zoning Board of Appeals, one member. As I said before, all of that information is available on our town website. The library will reopen, go back to the regular hours, beginning Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-first. So the hours are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine thirty to five, Tuesday and Thursday, nine thirty A. M. to eight P. M. And also, library is open Saturdays from nine thirty to three P. M. Last but not least, Fall Mini Road Cleanup, October second on Saturday. The Earth Day Committee has left over yellow trash bags before the leaves fall and the snow flies. Help clean up your little part of town. So we're looking for volunteers to clean up the town. Bags are viable to pick up at the following place and time. Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, Charlton Library, between five and seven P. M. Thursday, September thirtieth, Town Hall Lobby, between nine forty-five and eleven fifteen A. M. Saturday, October second, at the Gazibo on the Common, between eight thirty and ten thirty. Disposal of the roadside trash can be done three ways. First, place bags in your own trash bin. Second, take bags to Transformation Station North Oxford, Saturday morning. Three, bring yellow bags to dumpster at the D. P. W. Hywell Barn on Flint Road, between eleven and one on Saturday, October second. Capital letters. Only yellow bags will be accepted at the D. P. W. That concludes it.
Thank you, Basha. Any other communications from the Board? Always like to see Roger Cleary in the audience. Roger, anything for open forum? Steve? All right, we are good there. Next up, we are doing appointments and resignations. Mr. Golds.
All right. Resignation from the Conservation Commission alternate. Attaches a letter from Bonnie Drake resigning her position as an alternate on the Conservation Commission. The Board should accept her resignation. A letter thanking her for her service to the town is in your side folder.
Thank you, Andrew. Wishes of the Board, i.e. I'm looking for a motion to accept her resignation with regret.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Next up, resignation of the Cultural Council.
All right. We have been informed by the Cultural Council that Angela Santa Maria has resigned from the Board. The Board should accept her resignation. A letter thanking her for her service to the town is in your side folder.
Excellent. Thoughts for the Board?
I make a motion that we accept the resignation.
Motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Next up is retirement, unfortunately.
We have received a notice of retirement from Police Officer Linda Watson to be effective September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Officer Watson was appointed as a police officer on November fourth, nineteen ninety-four. A certificate recognizing her service to the town has been completed and is in your side folder. I would like to thank Officer Watson for her service to the town of Charlton.
I know Officer Watson's gonna be missed. We were trying to research whether Linda was actually the first female officer on staff, but our records don't go back far enough. However, that being said, I'm sure she was one of the first. So Linda, if you're watching, thank you for everything that you've done, and we wish you a happy retirement.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Can I get, actually, do we need to vote formally? I can't remember about police officers.
Might as well just take a motion to acknowledge receipt.
Yeah, can't hurt. Can I get a motion to at least acknowledge receipt?
I make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the retirement.
Second. All right. Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Linda, thank you once again. All right, now we're doing some appointments.
All right. Building Administrative Assistant. So thirty-one applications were received for the vacant Building Administrative Assistant position, of which is a thirty-eight-hour clerical union position at twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents per hour. Nine candidates were chosen for interview. Three declined, and one was from Charlton. The recommendation is to appoint Michelle Aker to this position. Her start date would be September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and I'd recommend the Board make the appointment.
I will say, I looked over the resume, and I was very impressed. What are the Board's thoughts?
I make a motion to appoint Michelle Aker to the position, the Building Administrative Assistant position.
Thank you, Patsy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
None. No.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Michelle, welcome to the show. Next up, some more good news. Treasurer Collector.
So twenty-six applications were received for the vacant Treasurer Collector Administrative Assistant position, which is a thirty-eight-hour non-union position, starting at twenty-three eleven per hour. Twelve candidates were chosen for an interview. Three declined, and two were from Charlton. Second interviews were also conducted with two finalists. A third finalist had declined her second interview. The recommendation is to appoint Elise Arnold to this position. Her start date would be September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. I'd recommend the Board make the appointment.
Again, another very impressive resume. I'm sure she's gonna work out well. Do I have a motion or discussion?
Discussion would be, so she's from Charlton, I take it?
Uh, no.
No.
We have two of the twelve candidates that were chosen for interview were Charlton residents, but none of the Charlton residents were selected for second round interviews.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Further discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, she's qualified, for sure.
Hearing none. What are the Board's wishes?
Um, I, unless it's further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Elise Arnold as the new Treasurer Collector Administrative Assistant.
Thank you, Patsy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Elise, welcome, also welcome to the show. We are actually ahead of schedule, which is always a nice thing. You know what? Let's go into new business briefly and go into the one-day liquor licenses.
All right. Special one-day alcoholic beverage license for the Maher Wedding. Attaches a request for special alcoholic beverage license from Caitlin Maher for a wedding to be held on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, from four thirty P. M. to eleven thirty P. M. at Camp Jocelyn, one fifty Richardson Corner Road in Charlton, Mass. Police Department, Fire Department, Building Commission have all approved the request. Per the Board's policy, the license, if approved, should be issued for two additional days, which is to allow delivery, the day before the event, if or pickup, the day after the event, with no sales allowed. I recommend the Board approve the special license as requested, with the dates on the license to be September twenty-fourth to September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Comments and thoughts from the Board?
No comments.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'm second.
All right. In discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? That is unanimous, and happy wedding. We actually have a second one.
The Smith Leiden Wedding. So attached, you'll find a request for special alcoholic licensed beverage from Daniel Smith and Joe Leiden to be held Saturday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, from four P. M. to ten P. M., also at Camp Jocelyn and one fifty Richardson's Corner, Charlton, Mass. Police, Fire, and Building have all approved the request. Per the Board's policy, the license, if approved, should be issued for two additional days to allow delivery and pickup with no sales allowed. I recommend the Board approve the special license requested on the dates, October fifteenth to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Discussion from the Board and/or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second? Discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Once again, happy wedding. You know what? Let's actually get, you know, I'm skipping around new business a bit because let's talk around some happy thoughts. Let's talk trick-or-treat.
This is, like, a wedding's not a happy thought.
I just got married. Cindy's watching. Cindy, best day of my life. Love you.
All right. It's that time of year again when the Board is asked to set the date and time for trick-or-treating. Halloween is on Sunday, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Normal trick-or-treat hours are five thirty P. M. to seven thirty P. M. Last year, during the COVID pandemic, the Board voted to change the hours to five P. M. to eight P. M. on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Chief Dowd approves as well, but would leave the time and date up to the Board. I would also like to invite you to join the employees on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, at eleven A. M. when the children from the library come over to Town Hall in their costumes and do trick-or-treating. The employees do their best to make this a fun event for the children and dress up as well to pass out candy. So what are the wishes of the Board? I know Chief Dowd is here as well, if there's any questions.
Will the chief be dressing up? That's what I like.
Well, he is dressing up.
I was gonna say, very, very. So again, yeah, I think, again, last year, we did five to eight suggestion. This year's five thirty to seven thirty, but I think we can go either way. I mean, again, this is all kind of discretionary anyway, but.
It's a Sunday. What was?
It's a Sunday, so the earlier, I mean, normally you stop later. We don't need the dark to trick-or-treat, so if we do it five to seven, or five to seven thirty, whatever, if you guys wanna vote later, because it's Sunday and people are already home, and
Five to eight sounds reasonable.
We don't need to wait for parents to come home from work or anything.
I'm fine with five to eight as well, to be honest with you. I mean, the more kids can get out and get some fresh air and get some candy, plus that gives me an excuse to, actually.
It's just pretty doc at eight o'clock. We did this last year.
Yeah.
Do we want to?
Everybody around us was canceling, and we wanted to try to make it.
Yeah.
Do we want to, do you think we should go earlier then, or?
Not early. Vote at seven thirty, but by seven thirty, it's pretty doc.
All right, how about?
Earlier, still get three hours.
Yeah, how about we, like, meet in the middle and say five to seven thirty? It's still, it's still two and a half hours.
Yeah.
Chief Dowd, adding value. Well done. All right, so I think at least the discussion was five to seven thirty. Do I have a motion?
Motion? Yeah.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Five to seven thirty. You got two and a half hours. Got your running sneakers on. And that big bag, that big pillowcase.
So I'm gonna take that as a yes from Steve. Opposed? That is unanimous. So five to seven thirty on Sunday, the thirty-first. Please be extra nice to everybody and practice social distancing if you can. All right. We are officially at six forty-five, so let's go to our scheduled appointment, if I can find it. It's right in front of me. Okay. Please be advised, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six forty-five P. M. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass., and via Zoom to act on a request submitted by Kenneth Kaskowski, trustee of the Kaskowski Family Realty Trust, to move and sell two chapter land parcels, twenty-seven D. One and thirty-three A. Two, along with thirty-three A. Three, not in chapter, approximately ninety-four point one-six acres located at Fifty-three Sturbridge Road. The buyer intends to convert the land to commercial use for the construction operation of a warehouse and/or distribution space, including features such as, not limited to clear height, base spacing, trailer parking, and automobile parking. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit any concern. So we are, public hearing is open. Just so everyone knows, this is also known as the Amazon Property. So I don't see anyone in the audience if they have any questions about it. Again, basically, we're just removing this from the existing sixty-one tax classification so that it'll, that it can be developed. It's basically also known as the town's right of first refusal, which I think would be a mistake on this one.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason for the town to own this property. It doesn't make any sense.
No, I, all the other boards have already concluded the same. FinCom, everyone else. I agree.
All right, then, that being said, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. In discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? That is unanimous. The public hearing is closed. However, we do have to make an official motion to refuse our right of first refusal.
I make a motion that we do not, we refuse our right to purchase the Fifty-three Sturbridge Road property.
Not that we do not, but that we do refuse our right.
We are not buying the property. So that's the motion.
We do refuse our right to, for first refusal.
So that's a motion. Patsy, Steve, that second from you?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? That is unanimous as well. You know what? Now we have the inimitable Jim Philbrook on. However, we're gonna go into old business and do special town meeting calendar first, and then we're gonna talk town hall hours, so Jim can get home at a respectable hour, speaking of town hall hours. Sorry to be jumping around so much, Andrew.
All right, so you'll find attached a draft calendar for leading up to the fall town meeting and kind of the benchmarks that we have to hit in order to make it to November fifteenth. So basically, at your next meeting, we'll be looking to close the warrant and draft and review a draft of the special town meeting requests to forward to the Finance Committee. And October thirteenth, we're looking to finalize the special town meeting warrant with FinCom. Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, the Board of Selectmen will review the motions for the special town meeting. By November first, we'll have to have the town meeting posted. On November, or Wednesday, November third, the Board of Selectmen and FinCom will finalize the motions for town meeting. And then finally, November fifteenth is the date set for the special town meeting at Charlton Middle School at seven P. M.
Perfect. Any questions for Andrew, or from the audience for Andrew, or for us about that? Again, all right, hearing none. I cannot stress enough, Monday, November fifteenth, at Charlton Middle School at seven P. M. Please come, because we did a lot last time, and we had a really anemic attendance, so we're hoping to have a little bit more this time. So that's my personal plea to you. All right, special town meeting calendar. We don't have to vote on that, right? Because that's old business. All right, next up, we're talking town hall hours. I know this is something that's been discussed for a bit, and also let me say, select person Singer could not make it tonight, so I would request that the Board hold off on any vote, but I'm actually, would like to have a discussion, both amongst ourselves, along with, I believe, there is a representative, Mr. Philbrook, I believe, is gonna be joining us. And I know there's some other employees in the audience. I always love to hear from you guys as well. Jim, come on up. So Jim, what I thought we'd do is start with you, and then we'll have a discussion and have a very friendly dialogue, if we can, and then, you know, we'll have some discussion, some more discussion, and hopefully, Selectman Singer can watch this, and we can come to some resolution at the next meeting. So without further ado, Mr. Philbrook, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. As I said, I'm Jim Philbrook, the Charlton Health Director. I was asked to come and speak tonight. I was going to update the Board first and foremost on the current situation of the COVID-nineteen cases in Charlton.
If you would please, yeah, if you would please do that, yeah.
We currently have about a hundred and eighteen active cases, and we had thirty cases over the weekend. And a lot of those are breakthrough cases. Towns of Sturbridge, Southbridge have now enacted mask mandates for Town Hall and are going to limit the hours of Town Hall for either that or appointment only. So they've asked back and forth. D. P. H. today on our call at three o'clock kind of indicated that they're, let us do it on our own on the mask mandate. I'm not, they haven't mandated it yet, but they're asking towns, and they're putting out pamphlets and flyers that, not only for public transportation, but in town halls, the municipal buildings, libraries, they would indicate that a mask would be mandated again. So it looks like we're taking steps back. But what's concerning is the amount of people that are vaccinated that are now getting the Delta variant, getting sick, and whole households are getting sick. It is concerning, especially with a hundred and eighteen active cases and thirty over the weekend, and we didn't even get the numbers yet from our old home day that we're hoping are not increasing it by another hundred. But that's, that's a lot. That's more than we had last year at this time. So where most towns are trying to be innovative and come up with ways to keep people out of Town Hall and use technology to get permitting process and stuff, I think that's the route we should go. I think that we need to protect all of the town employees. They're very, very hardworking. I must say, I've been in a lot of town halls, and I'm not just saying this, but this Town Hall, when you come in here and you want something, you get it right away. And I think that goes to, from the leadership from Andrew on, from you and everyone else, and from myself and all the department heads, but you're not shy, told to come back, you know, get your stuff. You get it right that day. I mean, you wait, in other towns, forty days for a permit. In Charlton, you wait four days. So there's a big difference. So I just wanted to say that they are valuable employees, and I think we should think about maybe holding off on the five days, if you were even thinking about it, especially with the mask mandate and maybe going to appointment, appointment only to come into that Town Hall once again. I think that would, by having five days, it's really difficult for people with families that have children, because the daycares cannot stay open. All the children are close contacts. They can't keep the help. The teachers are positive. Children tomorrow in Charlton is a very, very large facility, and they're having trouble staying open. And they're a very, very reputable place. Angela, who's the owner, does a great job, but I speak to her more than I speak to my wife. So it's very, very difficult, and we certainly want to do what's best for everybody. And I'm just telling, asking that you take into consideration, if you are with Mr. Singer later going to make a decision, that it looks like we're taking steps back. I'm not gonna make a recommendation for a mask mandate until they mandate it. I'm recommending that people get vaccinated if they can, and we'll facilitate that. But right now, that's, looks like the surrounding communities around us are doing what we just talked about. Mask mandate and thinking about limiting hours of Town Hall, again, once again.
So, but, so your discussion here tonight is more about limiting the Town Hall hours from four to five days, and, but, but you're also pulling in that, you're pulling in the, the virus updates that we've.
Yeah, I think it's important to do it for a reason, but my reasoning is on the public health and safety side of it, and I look at it. I mean, I'm not part of that. I work seven days a week. It doesn't matter if it's Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. People don't hesitate to call on I, nor do I not hesitate to answer.
Of course.
The job doesn't stop, but I'm saying there are essential people that go home to young children that we want to keep safe to make sure, and now they can't go to daycare. And if you added a fifth day, all of a sudden, you're not gonna get your child into a daycare center. And it also is going to add other costs. I think that you're still working forty hours in four days, but the girls in my office have worked thirty-four hours only. So if you went with Friday, all I'm gonna have to do is shut down another, other day. I mean, unless you give them six hours more, but they've already committed to other jobs. One of them sings at a church, and the other one has a young child, and she doesn't want to pay for daycare for another day. So it's things like that that you have to take into consideration. They're very, very good employees. They do whatever we ask of them, but I'm just saying that what's happening now, if you look at it logistically, I don't think it's the best decision to go to five days and be safe with everyone, especially looking at another. Andrew and I talked about it. We weren't gonna, you know, mandate a mask mandate for the Town Hall unless D. P. H. came forward, because we can't do anything less. We can make it more strict, but we can't make it less strict. So once D. P. H. said, and it looks like next week, they may come down with a mask mandate for all municipal buildings and libraries.
By, by who? By the state or by?
That'll be by D. P. H. Yeah. The state, in a state of emergency, the governor had full control over the Executive Board of the Department of Public Health. In this case, it comes from the Executive Board of the Department of Public Health. And they work with DESI and E. C. C. to mandate sports, Meyer, and all that. It's their own branch, and we talk about it twice a week. I think we're on our two-hundred-and-twelfth meeting today. It's, it just goes on. You think you're done. We were down to zero cases for a couple of months. Then all of a sudden, it went back up. I guess it does go hand in hand with working five days a week. I think that fifth, the extra day of exposure, especially with masks, wearing masks five days a week, I just think it's a long day. It's tough to get. Like I said, the daycares, they're having trouble staying open. The schools now with the close contact. But what they can do is, they can test and stay in place to make sure that you are negative. If you're a positive, then they send you home. But DESI is the driver of that narrative, and they control it. And Board Health really doesn't have any say in that, so. But we do have a say in what happens in a public building with public employees.
But for the information that you get, you, you're able to see how many people, how many active cases we have, how many new cases we have?
Yes.
Not just cumulative?
No, we can see, actually, we're just, I don't know if Andrew has told the Board, but I did receive a grant that I applied for for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eighty per year, to hire a nurse slash epidemiologist to assist with the cases so we can better take and handle the cases, because our nurse that we currently have now is too busy doing vaccination and shots. So we do have a grant for an employee that is, has already started and is working. And she had been already working for us for the last six months, giving shots. So her husband is a Charlton firefighter, Mr. Walcott. His wife was a registered nurse, and we're happy to have her continue to stay on board with the state granting us the money. If you look at the list of towns, they're all big, large municipalities, and then there's this little town in Charlton stuck in the middle of them. So kind of proud that we did.
Yeah, it's nice we got that grant. Yeah, that's good.
So that's gonna assist us to make sure. In Charlton, when you're a close contact or you're home and your family's isolating and keeping away from each other, like, your husband may stay in the basement because he doesn't want his kids to catch it, because they're close contacts. We'll offer them to go to the store, go to the drugstore, do what we can for them. We don't want the contract tracing collaborative just calling, saying, "You okay?" Stay home, and that's it. We want to offer a little bit more.
But, but, but for those, for those type of cases, that, that, that take that type of look upon, how many are there in Charlton right now? I mean, you said a hundred and eighty, but you said a hundred and eighty new cases over the weekend.
There's a hundred and eighteen active cases. That means they're actively either quarantining or isolating, and that we have to monitor them to make sure they stay home. This, in the last ten days, we've had cases of children from zero to four, seven cases, five to six, two cases, seven to nine, one, ten to fourteen, two, fifteen to eighteen, three cases, nineteen to twenty-nine, three, thirty to thirty-nine, we've had ten cases, forty to forty-nine, eight, fifty to fifty-nine, two, sixty to sixty-nine, three cases, seventy to seventy-nine, one case, and eighty to eighty-nine, three cases, and ninety to ninety-nine, one case in the last ten days.
Can you share that? Can, if you, if you share that number with?
I can keep you updated as much as you, but when the emergency stopped, we used to give out addresses. It was a move point after it reached about twelve, you know, twelve hundred.
Not addresses, just stats in general.
And that was more for, more for police and fire, and it was that HIPAA thing that was involved. But certainly, we want to make sure that each person gets a phone call, and you know that there's someone there to help them. We just don't want to feel, and the whole family's sick. If you don't have relatives, how do you get food? How do you go to get a drugstore? We want to make sure we offer that. And when we go grocery shopping for people, we do a lot of stuff for them, so.
And how are you doing, you're doing that, how are you doing that? Do you need help with that, or how are you doing that yourself?
I do that along with my staff. If they need help, along with the nurses, along with, you know, we have a great staff of certain members that have been helping at the Harrington Hospital site that has currently had to close because of a mold issue, unfortunately. But we hopefully, they've told me they're gonna open back up for the booster shots. And then we still have the in-home people that are compromised that we have to go back to, to give that booster shot. So we're working on that.
So can I summarize? So what we're doing right now is trying to figure out town hours, and you're
Yep.
And from what I, from what I got from you is, right now is probably not the best decision to start making changes, and maybe it would be better to hold off six months a year, let COVID kind of, we don't want COVID to affect our decision. We want to make decisions based on fiscal responsibility,
Absolutely.
community needs, resident needs, even in, you know, even to make, you know, help with, with the employees in mind. So maybe, right, maybe it makes sense, even though we keep on wanting to kick this can, maybe it makes sense to now kick this can down.
I agree.
Um, so, cause we don't want something like COVID that, I mean, we like to think big picture. It might take three to five years to, to kind of get rid of it. Maybe we relook at this six months or twelve months from now. So we can make an educated decision based on resident needs and, and without compromising health. Does that makes, does that?
Very well put. That's it. It's definitely, it's something, I'm here because I, I am worried about public health and safety and I feel it's my job. And it's also the, I know the employees of the, um, this town hall are great working employees, but they're also concerned. Um, they don't, it looks like we're gonna take steps back. But there's a lot of younger people we've hired here and they have children and stuff that are very concerning. Cause to get them into daycare now, you can't do it. There's just not, they're not available. And you're compromising your children. And, and it becomes a tough situation when you have to compromise and make a decision on staying home with a sick child or coming to work. It, it's a very tough decision. And having four days and, and given four days of quality, maybe less than a watered down five days at this point because of COVID. And I think that's well put.
Just to, again, let's have an open dialogue. All right. That, the other side of that though, is the more we kick it down, the, 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 the lane, the worse it gets eventually. Now, I'm not, now if, if the board were to decide to, to open up five days at all, I, I wouldn't recommend we do it for six months anyway. But if the board were to decide to, that the overall philosophy of the board of selectmen is going to be that town hall should be open five days a week, then we should give as much notice as possible to the employees so that they can deal, deal with their issues. I would rather have a discussion now to say, what's the feeling of the board? And if it really is, look, we're, we're gonna postpone the decision for another year, then it just puts the employees and the residents back in the same exact position that, than they're at now. So at some point, we have to decide if we're going to do this or not. And are we going to do that now with an assumption that it doesn't occur for X months in, in the future to Jim, to your point, to, to hopefully things clear up? And then even then it can just be like, okay, well, we'll come up with, with, with an alternate plan at that point. So again, I'm just trying to give the opposite side for discussion so that we give both sides equally of, I, cause I think it's, I don't want to say it's unfair to the employees, but this has been talked about for a while and I think everyone needs to get an understanding around, yes, the thought is that we are going to open up five days a week or we're not. Or some other, I mean, I, I don't know what, what, how the board feels about this at all, clearly. I'm just trying to say, we need to help give direction so people can start planning. That'd be my case for saying, we need to start discussing it even tonight and get a feeling from the board. And then we can talk timeline later, but I think it's fair both to the residents and to the employees to be able to say, yeah, here's the expectation that you're coming back in the office or you're not, or you're working from home on Fridays or you're not. I mean, you know what I mean? Like ju- just to have some, some clue.
Yeah.
So, but again, I, that's just my thought, but you know, I.
I mean, even if a decision is made, if we voted right now to say we're five weeks, you know, eight to four, whatever, those are gonna be, or nine to five, whatever the hours are. Um, we, I mean, and, and we'll, it'll start in six months. In six months, we may very likely say, it's not gonna start in six months because we still have, we still have COVID. But the reason why I kind of brought this up in the whole first, in the first place is where I, I, I did want all the boards to kind of come back to us and say, this is why we, we shouldn't be here on Friday. This is, these are, this is when the residents need us most and these are the hours we want our office to be open. Because even though the town hall may be open five days a week, it maybe doesn't make sense for some departments to be physically in this building five days a week. You know, every, every department we have within this building have different customers that have different needs. Um, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, you know, in, in with all building inspections, they may work with contractors who are in early in the morning or, and then, um, you know, the regular, you know, homeowners that are coming for permits after work. So maybe it doesn't make any sense for them to move hours from the, from the early time and the late time just to be open on Friday. Or maybe they need to be open for so many hours on Friday. But that's what I was, I was kind of hoping that all the boards would come to us and say, this is our personal plan. Just because the town hall hours are open, doesn't mean that everybody has to follow those hours. It could be flexible. That's kind of how the world is going. So, but I, I don't see those proposals. I, like, I don't, don't.
Yeah. Before I turn over the audience, I, I want to hear from other members as well. So I don't know, Asher, Steve, if you have anything you want to say.
Yeah. First of all, Jim, thank you for, for your, for your COVID response. That was, that, that wasn't part of the, the topic of the whole, the beginning of the conversation, but, but, um, I tend to agree with you. What I haven't seen here is, is I want to hear from department heads. It could be anonymous. It can be email. It can be, we won't share it with anybody. I want to, I, I, I just want to make sure we have, we have, we have external customers, which are the citizens. And we have internal customers, which are people trying to do, people trying to do payroll, whether it's DPW or, or police or fire. Do they have any issues with us being closed on Fridays? But personally, and this is kind of a joke between all of us, I have one issue. It's like, yeah, I have to come sign things on Thursday or Mary jumps up, jumps up and down my back because I can't get there on Friday, which Friday is the easiest day for me to get there. But, but if anybody has, um, we, we haven't heard from department heads.
So I.
Oh, God. Oh, sorry. Uh, uh, can you come on up?
Just introduce yourselves because everybody doesn't know who you are.
But before you do, I mean, feel free to come up. Asher, do you have anything you want to add for now?
I want to listen first. I do have something to say.
Please.
Okay.
If you just introduce yourself.
Kathy Stanley, Director of Assessing. Um, I did put together a letter. I don't know if you received it or not. I do have some additional thoughts. I'm happy to send your way. Having worked in a variety of town halls over the years, I would have to say that we did kind of call and do a survey and most town halls are not open on Friday. Um, if they are, a lot of them are closed to the public. Um, in fact, we're one of the only towns in the area that are open forty hours at all. We are open forty hours a week now. Um, and a lot of town halls are open thirty-five, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-six. So we already do quite a great service to the public being open forty hours a week. Our busiest times generally is first thing in the morning. So you have a good point with, you know, they come in because they can come in at seven-thirty in the morning and take care of business before they head off to work for the day. Um, they can come on Tuesday night as well. But a lot of offices would be closed on Friday. I know back from what I understand, the assessor's office was closed to the public on Fridays, back when the office was open on Friday, um, just to try to get some more things done. But all department heads, I kind of went around and talked to as many as I could, felt that if people do need a Friday, that the department head accommodates them. I know for house inspections, if somebody calls and they really need a Friday, we don't have a problem doing that. I'll meet them on a Friday. I'll meet them on a Saturday. I'll meet them at night, you know, whatever they need. So I think you do have very cooperative employee staff here that does accommodate people. But no matter what you change the hours to, somebody's always gonna complain. Um, and so I think it is difficult if you have an elected board making these decisions to change employees' hours because a couple of years, someone changes it back. You know, it does seem more like a town manager type of thing in my other communities because you want a cohesiveness. There's a lot of staff, including myself, that have been hired with a four-day work week. And there's other obligations, whether it's a family member or a child or, um, another job or, um, your parents, that they made the financial decision to come to work here because of a four-day week. And they're still working their forty hours. It's not like, you know, they're getting a day off. They're working forty hours. But they made that decision. So you're impacting a lot of people if you choose to go to five days that got hired while this was a four-day week and they made that decision. It's a really rough market out there to hire people. I'm sure you, you see it every day, everywhere. Restaurants are closing, people are closing because you can't get people to come to work. I know from my assessing position, there's jobs all over the state that I could go to and, and they can't find people. So we do want to remain attractive and we do want to have employees backs. You go to five days and you might get someone that complains in six months that, oh, well, I liked it better the other way. You know, you, you can't keep going back and forth either. That, that's not healthy for anybody. But I do think that everybody's willing to accommodate if you had some flexibility on Fridays. Most of the department heads that I spoke with, I'm sorry they didn't reach out to you, said that they weren't.
But Kathy, herein lies the rub, that when this was first enacted years ago, way before you, it was sold as a, as an expense benefit. And it was supposed to be, for all intents and purposes, extraordinary and, and it was not supposed to have a negative impact on customer service. Now, from our own complaints and even from the survey that went out, I'm not, I mean, I didn't run the exact numbers, but a fair amount of people do say that Fridays are better for them. So the question I have for all the department heads, everyone in town hall and the residents, quite honestly, as well as my colleagues on the board is, we've often discussed, again, in pure dialogue, we're all friends here, of, you know, why, you know, why should we be open on Friday? And I, I, and I think you make excellent arguments, but let me invert it of why shouldn't we be open on Fridays? At the end of the day, if people are saying that Fridays are better for them, at least a certain percentage are, I have yet to hear a really good argument that says, outside of COVID, that says that we should have town hall closed on Friday. Now, if someone, now, my personal philosophy, I think we should be conducting business five days a week. I'm not saying we have to be in the office five days a week. If someone can convince me that on Fridays, whether it's an appointment schedule, whether it's online permitting, regardless of what it is, that we have contact, work from home, regardless of what, I'm pretty much amenable to that.
Absolutely.
But the idea that if I need to do something on a Friday, that there's a probability that I can't come in at all, or I cannot do a transact, probably would be a better way to think about it, on a Friday, as a representative of all of our voters, I'm not comfortable with that. So if someone gives me a plan, again, just speaking for myself here, if someone gives me a plan that says, well, yeah, you can do everything that you can do in, in the office, either from home, email, wha- what it is, I don't have a huge issue with that. I personally do have an issue though, saying that we're not gonna do any business at all on Fridays anymore, knowing the original assumption for this plan, again, going back seven years, was that it was an expensive. And they, let's be, let's just be honest, the expenses aren't there to, to, to justify it. Now, if we want to make a discussion around employee retention, different conversation. It wa- it wasn't the original purpose, but if that's, if that's a reason now, completely valid. If it's around people prefer the flexibility during the week, completely valid. But we gotta throw out, basically what we're gonna say is the original test, we've now changed the rules. And this board can change, to your point, and next year in May, this board could change. Um, and someone else could come in and say, you know what? I disagree with everything Borowski said and we're gonna go in, in a completely different direction. So I, I'm not tilting my hand either way or another, except to say, I expect us to be able to service our customers five days a week. How we do that, there's some really smart people in this building and I will leave it to them to figure out. But that's just my.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a great point and I don't disagree. And I'm certainly willing, and I think everybody would be, to say Fridays by appointment only. We did that in Paxton. It's Fridays by appointment only. I think Spencer does that as well. Um, so you can put it right on the website. Each department can. I check my email on Friday. I check my email on Saturday. If, if somebody's reaching out and it seems like they have an emergency, I respond to them over the weekend. You know, absolutely, I can look that up. I can remote in and look that up for you. I think that business maybe already does get transacted, but for the public to see that, to be able to put Fridays by appointment. Um, I know Kurt has met people on Fridays. I know you do work on Fridays.
I've seen Karen come in for, to give somebody a birth certificate or marriage certificate on a Friday. I've seen, I've seen.
Seen Karen marry people. No, that's.
I've seen, um, and I've, like, I've seen, I've seen planning board, um, you know, staff and director come in on, and to meet somebody on Friday because that work. So it is happening behind the scenes.
Right.
Maybe it takes us to formalize a little bit, right?
By appointment, yeah.
No, if it's happening behind the scenes, I don't know if we need to formalize it.
But do we, but do we?
They said on the website, by appointment only, the public would know they can reach us on Friday.
We formalize it because it makes people knowledgeable and happy, right? It, it kind of consoles the people who say they're not working, but yeah, they're really working. Um, why do we, do we really want to, um, kind of take everything in the town hall and toss it around and say, everybody's working on Friday when we can satisfy the needs, like you were saying, if the residents can be serviced by appointments. Many of the forms are online. Um, there's, there's drop boxes. Um, I, I know that with taxes, that, that, that's the big, I think the biggest complaint we have is taxes are due and I need to wait for that very last day at, to, to bring, to pay my taxes um, because they don't want to pay interest or whatever. Like I, I get, that's, I think most of the people who talk to me, that's their big issue.
That was a big issue. When I did talk to Virginia, she wasn't able to be here. She, oh, she is here.
Hey, Virginia.
So maybe when taxes are due or something.
Right. So taxes are due Friday.
Virginia, come on up.
Yeah, come on.
Nice try. Nice try.
So, all right. Taxes are due Friday.
Can I make a, like, leave Virginia a loan or?
Yes, me alone.
Come on.
Anybody rush to? Unbelievable.
All right. So here's the scenario. Taxes due Friday, we're closed, people get upset. They, we hear it on Monday. I get it. We've tried to accommodate. There's, there's a Dropbox outside. There's online payments. There's the USPS old school mail. Um, they don't like it. Some people like to come in. I get it. They'll come in on Monday. We'll take their payment in.
And waive the interest.
But if it's a due date, we were gonna open on Fridays, Virginia, is that what you?
So if, if they, if there is a due date on a Friday, if the board wanted us to open on a Friday for a due date, we would be more than happy to.
Do, do, do you, do you give them a break if, if they pay on Monday and because we're closed on Friday?
Please don't say anything out loud right now. What, what I would recommend is regardless of which way the board, or maybe regardless isn't the right way to, worth to use, is that there are certain things we're not gonna do anymore. One is I would recommend at least that, look, if we have payments due on a day, office is open. No more, if we have like a, you know, like a Thursday holiday for what, like what we had, like no more, no more, you know, four, four-day weekends because as you can imagine, we caught more than a few phone calls about that. I think that was just one of those weird things that doesn't normally happen.
It only happens every couple of years.
But still.
And that's why I said, come in.
But that's a, that's why I say, I want to be flexible, but my, and I, and you guys know how much I like all of you. But my first responsibility are, is to the taxpayers of town. You guys are a close second, but taxpayers gotta come first to me.
I'm a taxpayer, so.
Yeah, yeah, right. Oh, absolutely. And, and I get that. So I'm not trying to be more overly difficult. That's why I'm willing to be flexible and compromise on this. But at least for me, I gotta see a plan that says, we can transact business on Fridays.
So I'm gonna look into it too. I know some towns that if it's due on a day that they're closed, like some towns do, closed on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, whatever, they extend it to Monday. So I'm gonna look into that, make sure it's like legal and.
Yeah, please do. We, we have enough, we have enough problems, Virginia. I don't want to have.
And that's, and that's what we, last time we talked about this, we did ask all departments to bring, bring their hours, bring their, you know, plead their case. If, if, if there's actual data and, and, and facts behind, this is why we can complete our job on Friday. I can't see any, anybody on this board really, at least not me, I'm not gonna vote. When I have you professionals telling me, these are the hours, this is when residents need us, they really, on Tuesday mornings or Tuesday nights, they, they, we have, you know, you know, an average of ten people coming in and we, you know, and you know what I'm saying? When you're giving me data and information, show me when you need to be open. I'm not gonna say, well, just because the five people who emailed me or, or talked to me said they're, though I have to work on Friday, they should be, that's not how I'm gonna make my decision. It's, 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 these are the facts. This is when people need us. And if, and now we have appointments on Friday morning. So if somebody specifically needs me on Friday, I'll come in and I'll mo- modify my hours. So I'm still working the correct amount of hours for that week. So we'll go home early one other day or something, right?
So I mean, I can honestly say, so there's what, four of us, five, maybe five in this room, that we pled our case six, seven years ago when this all changed, you know? And, um, when we worked Fridays, there was not, there was maybe a handful of people came in on Fridays. We fought and fought and fought. We didn't want to change our hours. No way, no way, no way. We changed them and it's busier now during the week than it ever was on a Friday. John, I mean, not saying just because I don't want to work on a Friday, I don't care either way. But I, it's thinking of the public, it's not busy on Fridays. They can say, you're not, you're not working. I can't come in.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as, as part of that survey though, there, there wasn't a fair percentage of people. Granted, it's a self-selected survey, so we all know, you know, statistically what that really means, but you, so that people feel very strongly about it, that, that a certain percent, at least twenty-five to thirty at the time, last numbers I looked, preferred the old hours. Now, so all I'm saying is that it's more than, and this is not a shot at you. I'd say, but, but it's more than five people that at least reached back out to us to say, you know what? I kind of like the old one more. Now, why they like the old one more? Again, to your point, it could very well be the, well, if I have to work on Friday, so, so do they. Which to me is a false argument because that doesn't work for me. It has to be, yes, because you're gonna conduct business on Friday. That's different than saying, I don't like the fact that they have a three-day weekend because you guys are still working forty hours a week. So I just would just caution that. It's like President Zabrowski. My, um, oh, hold on, Steve.
I was, I was just going to say exactly the same thing. Um, we were hoping and we were, I thought communicating that clearly that we would like to see some data. You know, something from you guys coming up and telling us, you know, this is, this is, this is, those are the pros, those are the cons. But I actually took a step out and I actually did it myself. So I went and I did talk to the people in the town, um, just to get in. So I went and I did talk to the people in the town, just to get informed a little better, since I'm new, and, you know, wasn't here six years ago when it all happened. And I have to openly say, as the selectman, I do understand that my responsibility is first to the taxpayers, sure, like Bill said, close, you guys, you know, second closest. I have listened to several excellent arguments, Kathy did job for me, that's why I let her speak, I did talk to her about it before, and I have to say that all the arguments that I have heard from the people in the town are, are excellent, in opposition to the argument that I've actually heard from a few people that were complaining about the hours. I did not hear a good, strong argument for me to lean towards being open five hours, I mean, five days. Now, this is my selectman head-on, now, the, uh, just the resident and the taxpayer. I cannot imagine me transacting the business between the hours of eight and five. I'm at work, and I cannot do it. Tuesdays work for me great, you know, the people are here in the town until seven, Mary's here god know how long, you know, 7:30, everybody here is very helpful, I, I just, I, I just, I would, as a, as a taxpayer, I would like to have that one day that is, that is here, and the people are here open for, for me to transact my business, and the generation that I represent, uh, working, you know, eight to five.
But does it have to be binary, though? Because I don't look at it as either or, I look at it as, we could just be, be flexible, again, I'm-
Well, I was going to just say that.
Say, you could work 10 to 7, so instead of 7 to, I, I can't remember where we work on Tuesdays, but you could work like 10 to 7 on Tuesdays instead.
The argument, the only, the only thing that I heard is that we're working five days, so should they, uh, doesn't go well with me at all, and like I said, I could, I did not hear myself a strong enough argument to, to go back to five, five-day week. Furthermore, we talked about a website, the redesigning the website, you know, making that accessible to all the taxpayers. In the 21st century, in the times that we're living, I cannot imagine people not having computers, not being able to access any type of the bill payment, Unibank, or you name it, throughout the, throughout the website. We are everywhere, Bill is always available through the website, we emails, we all are, and, and I know that you guys are. So, I, I just, I just can't justify, in this uncertain times that we are now living, to add to the bucket, and I don't want to bring the COVID in, but to add to the bucket, to the people that are already living on the edge. You know, we don't know what to do with our kids, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, the only steady thing that, that we all have is our jobs. I feel secure in my position, if somebody will come to me and tell me, hey, now you're going to work four days, or five, or seven days, I don't know, I just think that this is, right at this moment, completely unnecessary. I'm, I, I just strongly believe that.
Alright, we go back to Steve, and then anyone else in the audience.
I, my, my opinion on that is, is-
Thanks, Virginia.
Is, I think, a majority, I agree with you, Roger, on, on, on the, on the citizens being able to, to go online and do things, but my concern is the department heads, and there's nobody, there's nobody from the fire department here, so I can't, so I, so I guess I could pick on them, there's nobody here from it. No, I'm not going to pick on you, Dan, no. As far as getting payroll done, so payroll needs to be done, are you guys having any issues with?
There's, there's no issues on the police department, with the town hall, town off.
And so, so, so payroll is due on Friday?
No, sure. Payroll's due Monday morning, unless it's Monday to off.
Monday morning.
Mm-hmm.
So there's plenty of time, so it's not that, because I'd heard, are there other departments that maybe linger on that, I, maybe I-
Ashley, Ashley, we got you, we're working on you, sorry, Steve, go. But it, but I still, what, what it still goes back to me, and this is where, and Roger, I'd like to get you next, is, is that, let's just say there's 100 residents in town who work retail, who work whatever job they have to, or, or like, they have alternate childcare, or, or, or like elder care, they can only conduct business on Friday morning.
They make an appointment, they call, and they make an appointment.
Well, we don't right now, so I suppose that's what I'm saying, is that there'd have to be something, and this goes back to what I was saying before, if I see a flexible plan in front of me in the next two weeks, to say, here's how we're going to deal with these folks, again, I'd like to think I'm the, I'm the king of compromise up here, and it just, but that's what I, that's what I, now, I, now, select person Singer might have a completely different view, because as I said, we're not taking action, I would prefer the board, I should say, not take action tonight, till select person Singer's back, and he may have a completely different view, but at least just speaking for myself, I want to be flexible on these things, it's just a matter of, you know, whatever. Ashley, hold on to your thought for a second, Roger, you do not have to stand up, what's going on?
I can if you want.
No.
No, no, no.
Roger pleaded 17 COVID rules. Originally, seven years ago, this was enacted to save money. My question is, I'm pleading pure ignorance, first of all, town hall people, they do a great job, wonderful, you know, all of that, don't get me wrong, but they're working four, 10-hour days, now, if there's a holiday, and they're hourly, not exempt, because a lot of the people here, obviously, salary, because, I mean, look at the hours they work. Do they get paid 10 hours for the holiday, where they used to get paid eight? I, I don't know, I'm just curious, I'm somewhat ignorant on that subject. How does that work?
I, Ashley, Ashley, did you hear that?
Yeah, so I can talk about it, so actually, so the finance, so the accounting office does payroll now, so I'm usually on, I'm answering emails all weekend long, so if anyone from fire, police, because fire, police, library, and highway all do their own payroll, and then my assistant accountant now does payroll internally for the, everybody else. So I'm answering emails Friday, if I get one Saturday, sometimes Terry's crazy and likes to work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so I'm answering emails about payroll all weekend long, they have plenty of time to get it in, it's usually due to us on Mondays, we have a Monday holiday, it's due to us Tuesday, so we have plenty of time to get payroll done and everything, and if there's ever any questions about anything, we're always answering on Friday. And then in regards to the holiday hours, the holiday hours are based on whatever the department's hours are, so some departments work, they don't work the long day on Tuesday, because they have late-night meeting Wednesday, so if there's a holiday, depending on what day it falls on, would depend on how many hours their department is open for that day. So if their department is open on a Tuesday for 11 hours, they'd get 11-hour holiday. If their department's open for only eight hours, then they'd get the eight-hour holiday, and so on.
So, Roger, so Roger, it's basically-
So you're not saving any money, if you're working four days a week, 10 hours a day, and they have a holiday, they get paid 10 hours worth, they work five days a week, 8 hours a day, just-
Correct.
I mean, I don't care, but that's the way it used to be when I worked in manufacturing, you know, you could get paid 8 hours for the holiday, just a point.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
The original point was to save money, that was why they did it seven years ago, I'm just bringing it up, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm ignorant, I-
It was for oil.
Oh, you're, yeah, so, yeah, so, so Roger, if we go back seven, eight years, that was-
Yeah, it was for heating.
Yeah, exactly, honestly, it was heating, it was between oil and, and electricity, and the thought was, by basically shutting things down on Fridays, you could save on AC in the summer, oil in the winter, things would be cooler, pardon the pun, and, and, but, again, do I think that those expenses were real? I, I'm, I'm going to be candid and say, no, not at all. That being said, this is the reality that we're dealing with now.
And I'm just bringing it up, I'm not-
No, Roger, yeah.
I'm not arguing that, I'm just bringing it up.
I will say, though, Roger, like-
The other point I was bringing up about getting people to work at the town hall, you just mentioned two new hires, one, I think, was excessive 30 people applied for the job, and the other one, excessive 20 people applied for the job. So clearly, the town must be at least somewhat desirable to work at, to get those kinds of numbers.
I mean, have you seen this board of selectmen, Roger? I mean, really?
Who, that's, yeah, and then most of them are- I mean, in me, I mean, I don't, we've all seen, no one's working, there's not employees out there, we are lucky, when, when, when we saw how many applicants we got, that was, that's pretty, um, pretty great, we, like, you know, we're, we're desperate to hire, we can't find people to hire.
But are they being hired on a four-day week?
No.
Can I, can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
So I've, I sat in on the treasure collector administrative assistant interviews, we interviewed, I think, and Virginia can double-check me, we interviewed like nine people, and I'm pretty sure four of them didn't show up, they just pointed the interviews at times, said they were coming, and then just didn't show up. So, I mean, it's not like we're, yes, we had 30 people apply, are some of them not qualified, yes, some people might be overqualified, but we're seeing a lot of people that are, we think are applying, to put the check mark on their unemployment paperwork, because you have to put that you're applying for jobs now, so we're also having that issue as well.
I will caution about using the argument of people were hired on a four-day workweek, whereas I am empathetic for it. I will say there's a lot of people out in private industry, for example, who were hired at, as work from home, and are now being asked to go full-time back into the office, so they've been completely virtual, and now they're all back in. Again, it's not, I, I'm not throwing darts, it's just, we have to always compare public versus private, and, and in private, that's a very common thing that is occurring right now, that people have worked from home for a year, they have settled their lives, and now suddenly they're being uprooted to say, no, no, we want you back in the office. My company, thankfully, is not like that, but that being said, I, I know a lot of, especially on Wall Street, that's happening left and right, so I, I just caution to use that as like a significant argument. That, that being said, I, I don't want to get too far deep in this, only because select person Singer's going to be back, I'm going to go, Steve, Jim, anyone else in the audience, board real quick, and then, and then we're going to finish it up in two weeks.
I would, I would, um-
Hold on, Dan. Uh, Steve, Steve first.
As a point of order, I would, I would, we, we've had Jim, Jim Philbrook, who has gone through COVID for a year and a half, he's probably worked 100 hours a week, and he, but, but he's still sitting at the podium now, and I don't know if he really needs to sit here, we ought to just congratulate him for his-
Well done.
Give him your excuse, unless you have something else to say.
No, I just want to say that, I was here most, I, housing court is now virtual, and I've been here for Fridays for housing court, it has to be private, I come to my office, it's good that we're closed on Friday, there are a lot of people here, Karen's here, building inspectors here, they're doing things that they can't do with the normal crowds here, so there is still business being conducted on Friday, so I want you to think, Andrew and I worked for a year straight, every single Friday, all day until 6, 7 o'clock, so he should be commended, too. During this COVID, we didn't, we didn't rest at all, but I just want you to know that I need some privacy, too, because I have housing court and stuff, I don't want to do it at home, I have my family and stuff there, so my office is wide open, so Friday is good, I lock the door, I pull it, and the judge asks if there's anyone there, so, and I've been going to housing court every Friday for quite a while, and it's back to virtual, rather than driving all the way to Worcester, but that is one thing, but there is business being conducted in this building, and also there's sterilization going on, because we're still in COVID, and that's what Kirby's job is on Fridays, when there's, not supposed to be people here, so.
Gotcha, thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Let's go Karen, Kathy, Dan, and then we'll see what happens. Karen, can you come up, if you don't mind? I know you hate being on TV, I know.
But I have to, absolutely. So, just saying, if you, you're going to have to cut hours somewhere, so you're going to cut those, put them to Friday, and then you're just going to take those 25 or 30 people that were upset that we're not open on Friday, and make them, or 25 or 30 other people, upset we're not open till five. The other issue I have is if you do by appointment only on Friday, how do you do that? Do you do it with a hourly person? Because what if we have no appointments? When are they working? What are their hours? You can't switch it every week. Or is it just department heads? And I know, most of us put a lot more than 40 hours in, and then, so, especially this year, so.
You don't think it would be okay to, I'm sorry, just, um, if the following, they, we'd have to make it up the following week, so if they, if they had to come in for two hours on Friday, then we'd have to, the next week, they'd have to pull it from somewhere else, they'd have to leave early, I mean, which, it's impractical.
That would be worse than, you know, that's just miserable, nobody'd know what their schedule is.
Kathy, 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 hold on a second, please.
Right, and what if there's no, if, well, if there's no appointment, what are their scheduled hours? So, if it's a part, if it's a, an hourly person, that's, all of a sudden, on Thursday afternoon, we get an appointment for Friday, and they've worked there 38 hours, are they coming in on Friday? And are they going to get overtime, or, you know?
Could it be comp, could we use it as comp time?
I just think it'll be a logistical nightmare for everybody, no one's going to know when they're working, when they're not.
No, I, honestly, I think you bring up a good point, that, that we have to talk through.
It's going to put on department heads, which are looking, you know, we're all looking at our emails at night, on weekends, my vacation, I came in twice, for like six hours on the week I had off, because I had to do it, there were certain things that had to be done, so, you know, it's just, it's, it'll put it on department heads to just do that extra that we're doing anyway, because it, logistically, won't work for part-time, not part-time people, but hourly people.
Alright, thanks, Karen. Let's go Kathy, then Dan, and then Ashley, I don't know if you're still on, if you want to talk.
So, um, I, I, to me, when I said Fridays by appointment, there wouldn't be anybody scheduled to be here, it would only be if there's an appointment, because I think 90% of the Fridays, there probably wouldn't be an appointment, so the ones are twice a year, or whatever that it were to happen, you would accommodate, and you would have to say, okay, we're going to do something, but I don't think it would be a weekly thing, so I don't see it as a logistical nightmare, because I think it's probably pretty rare that it would even happen that we get a request on Friday.
So you would open it up and say, we're-
Karen, okay.
No, 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 no.
This is not the school committee, don't make me gavel.
No, I hear you.
I'm kidding my friends on the school committee, you guys know it.
Like, if you, if you get the request, but you may never get one, or you might get one once or twice a year, you know, you would be able to accommodate it for when you got that request, that, okay.
And Kathy, you're already coming in when, so, that's what I'm kind of trying to say, if, if, it, it formalizes what's already happening, and it kind of, it, it placates the, the residents that are saying they're not working on Friday and I am, tech, I mean, I said, I've seen, I've needed things on Friday, and have come in on Friday and had people help me, so, I'm just, we're just trying to make, as part of the, the compromise, to kind of just say, yeah, they are working, and here, it's in writing that they're working, make an appointment if you really need them.
Absolutely, I mean, for me, I'm mostly remoted in on Friday, but I remote in, and I do a lot of work that, yeah, I need quiet, I need privacy, and I get more done.
Alright, let me go to Chief Dowd, Ashley, select person.
Can I finish the one other thing I did want to bring up?
Absolutely.
I think this is important as part of this thing, I know there's been some complaints on if there's a Friday holiday or a Thursday, sometimes we ended up shutting, I think it was Juneteenth this year, that we ended up closing on a Thursday. One of the other things in a comprehensive plan that would maybe address some taxpayers, I think Andrew, you and I had discussed this at one point, is to doing a flex half-day, so if there was a holiday that was on a Friday, so we're getting Thursday, that half the staff maybe would come in on a Thursday and half on a Monday, so that we would accommodate more tax people for those unique holidays when, you know, obviously not for Christmas Day and things like that, but for those unique holidays where, you know, it's a normally scheduled day in other towns, but it's a Friday here, and we're closed on a Thursday, that we would do half on Friday, half on Monday. That was an idea that we, we talked about, just to be accommodating to the residents.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Chief Dowd, in uniform.
Very brief, because it doesn't impact me specifically with the police department, so we're 24/7. I feel bad for your part-time employees here, I don't like any of the full-time, but the part-time, you're going to have a tough time bringing people in on a Friday to work two hours, to get their hours, and then they have a whole day of daycare ahead of them You're going to have a tough time bringing people in on a Friday to work two hours to get their hours, and then they have a whole day of daycare ahead of them because because of that. So I think you're going to have a problem with part-time employees and being able to deliver the same amount of services you currently provide. And a four-day work week is going to be stretched really thin on a Friday for, and I I was here seven years ago. It wasn't like this was um Logan Airport and people going up and down the halls looking for a place. Most people know. I'd love it if the registry was open Saturdays and Sundays, but guess what? It isn't. You adjust, you make, you know, you you're open here late one night, you're doing a lot online. I would just suggest that you start thinking about getting with that. Jim made a great point about COVID. And no sooner do we open on a Friday, we're going to be closed because of COVID. So it seems, you know, I understand, seven years ago, there was a mistake made. But seven years ago is the time to fix it. And I think you've got half your employees here that have started, that have never known anything but. I come in and there's new employees all the time. I'm I'm, you know, I'm meeting them and they weren't here. They don't know what it was like seven years ago. Most towns, you can do a lot online. And shame on you if you don't call ahead and see when you're open. I mean, that's just life today. You got you got your phone, you got a computer basically in your hands. You can figure out the hours. It shouldn't be that difficult. Would it be nice? It would be nice if we were open twenty-four seven. But I guarantee you that that one person that comes in at three o'clock in the morning to pay their their dog licenses, is it worth staying open? I don't know. I mean, you know what the hours are, you get accustomed to it. I would just suggest that you probably leave the hours Monday to Thursday. There's no perfect system. There's there's nothing's perfect. But I think when you've got people that are part-time employees and you start to say to them, hey, you need to start accounting for a couple hours on Friday. And they say, well, now you shifted the balance of the scales because now I got daycare, it's not worth, now we got to hire new employees. We're not as efficient. And again, a lot of these employees that came to work here have known nothing but. That's it, my two cents.
No, that's smart two cents.
Ashley.
So I just want to talk about if like if we were to cut hours during the day, we have to cut somewhere. So I'm I I my office obviously is in a public office, but I know just from walking in the hallways from seven-thirty to nine usually is our biggest time. Um, you have all the contractors, when you pull the parking lot, they're waiting at the door, waiting for us to unlock the door. Um, to get their building permits, they wish we were open at six AM, um so they can get their day started because they start early. So I just, I feel like, and then, um, I don't know if anyone saw on Employee Appreciation Day, there was a couple departments. I know um Virginia was going out and helping taxpayers come in till we closed at three. Um, I know Lisa had gone over to help building. Um, we did have a lot of um a handful of taxpayers that came in. Obviously, it was a Tuesday, but um depending on how we were to change our hours, that would affect the taxpayers. So um I I just feel that the way the hours are now and obviously the more stuff we offer online, the better. I know the building permit's on its way. Everything else, pay your bills online, request payment online, all that stuff is, you're available, able to do it online. You got the Dropbox. So if we were to cut hours back, they have to go somewhere. You're going to affect the people that I I believe are already using Town Hall. Rather than the people that are complaining that maybe don't really utilize Town Hall. It's more of an argument as, uh, well, you we work five days, so you should work five days. But just seeing that from Employee Appreciation Day, how we closed at three, you saw people coming in and they were kind of upset that we were closed at three and they couldn't get their business done. So you will affect the people that are actually physically utilizing Town Hall, I feel.
Thanks, Ashley. All right. Any final comments on the Board of Selectmen before we move on?
Um, I, my personal opinion is to work on the our website and make sure that it's more interactive. You can do more things. I think there's a lot of things, and even if we we need to invest more money into our website to make it more interactive, more forms, more things that you can um actually that, um whether it's interactive questions or whatever else we can do. And as for um all the department heads, I I like I said, I asked for la- last month when we were, the month before, when we actually had this conversation, comprehensive plans on how you will serve the residents with the out, what hours you determine are necessary or what you need to serve the residents, what's happening now. You know, the pros, cons, whatever. Present a plan to us so we have those facts, written plan, so we can determine the hours and make a decision again based on the the facts in front of us. It's great to hear everybody talk and we get a feeling, but to have that, those numbers, you know, this is when most of our customers come in. This is why, this is the customer base we deal with. Um, so again, we can make a decision based on um the needs of the residents. Also recognizing the um the the part-time issue with the employees and the logistics and and already knowing that work is being done on Friday. So whether it's, you know, an appointment only and it's really just the director, just the department heads that are coming in because they're salaried or whatever, whatever the plan is, put it in writing and submit, maybe we need to kind of um put a deadline on that. And I know no one wants more work, but when we make a decision, we need to kind of base it on something versus just just random opinions, if that makes sense. And again, I know I'm asking all the department heads to do more work, but if you could do that, it will really help all of us make a better decision.
Basha or Steve, any any last comments for the night?
Yeah, yeah, I what's what, I I've heard from department heads and and Dan, thank you, and and all the other um. What's missing here though is, and it's just a minor concern, only only because they're missing, is the the Planning Board and/or Building Commissioner's Office. How many people try to get to them on Fridays? And do we know? Are they being shunned?
I can tell that a lot of the complaints, and there haven't been a lot, but the ones that I received, it was from builders who wanted to conduct business on Fridays, which again goes to say of of give me a plan that says we're we're going online permitting, and this all goes away as far as I'm concerned. But I need to see something where people are being serviced on Fridays, one way or another.
So the online permitting system just launched internally for testing on August first. So we have, I think, basically by the beginning of November, the goal of actually having it live where any contractor can get their permit, you know, a hard copy of their permit twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You know, once it's, once it's approved, just a.
If it's a, if it's a simple permit, but if it's a complex permit, this, someone has to get in and contractors typically need to s- need to want to see a building commissioner or someone in that office or Planning Board member, I would think on Friday.
Are you saying complex? Like planning, they, it's, you know, for years and years and years, planning was only by appointment only. There was no walk-ins. And when Randy came in, he kind of changed that to make it more walk-in, but mo- when, you're not really walking, walking in a plan on Friday doesn't make any.
Not walk-in, but if you have a question or clarification and you need to roll something out, I I don't know, I'm just um.
And 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 building may, again, if that's what the issue is, that you can't pull a permit or you can't grab your permit, maybe, again, move, heading, heading toward that online. It's worth the investment.
We're there. It's it's already in testing. It's been.
It's been working hard at times, just just.
All right. Basha?
I'm good.
All right, I think we're good. Long story short, thank you all for coming. Again, this is all about dialogue. I mean, we're all friends here. We'll probably talk about this again with Selectperson Singer is back on two weeks from now, the twenty-eighth. I'm not going to guarantee that we're that we're going to make a decision because we may not even have the information. Again, I think what I I think for the department heads here, thank you for coming, those watching at home, hi Ashley. Give us a plan that basically allays any concerns from the residents. You come up with that. Again, speaking for myself, I'm going to work with you. Uh, I can't speak for everybody else, but at least for me, I just, you know, I'm I'm showing my hand to be able to say, I'm I'm willing to work with you on this, but it can't be at the expense of the taxpayers. So come up with something that makes, if not everybody happy, at least not everyone miserable. That's usually good enough for me. So that being said, we're done on on this one for the night. Thank you. Jim, as always, and Jim, thanks for wearing a tie. We appreciate that.
Real quick question.
Virginia, seriously?
No, real quick, real quick. How many times on social media have I answered a question about a taxpayer, somebody trying to pay a bill?
Multiple times.
Many.
How many times have I been yelled at on social media? I just want to.
Just bring us back, bring us back the written plan, bring us back, bring us back the written plan so we.
Everyone works hard.
Write down everything that you guys.
Chief Dowd's back now. What is happening? Thanks, Virginia.
All the residents outside with the pitchforks right now?
Not yet.
No.
All right, let's go back to some some happy news. We're back under new business, the Summer Fall Concert Series. Selectperson Zarowski, talk to us about uh about your good ideas.
So it it's just the one we thought a good idea, and we, after the successful Employee Appreciation Event, we were approached by many people actually willing and being excited to get more involved in the community and see more things happening on our common. So um we are working on bringing in the local talents, uh bands, singers, uh in, you know, people from Charlton to come and um, you know, show us what this town is all about and hopefully get people involved in other things within the town while they getting engaged in um in the fun part. Meaning boards, uh voluntary positions and and the like. We're just trying to build a community that wants to be together. And we think that bringing the bands and music for now would be a good beginning for something like that. Obviously, summer is over, so summer is out, but we working towards the October for the first Siri.
I think that the more we can use the common, the better off we are.
The better off we are. We want them all here with us.
Very well done. Thank you, Selectperson Zarowski. Is there anything that people can do to help you at this point, or you just want to come back?
Uh, no, we would like to hear from everybody. Maybe you have your favorite band, maybe your son has a band and they, you know, uh play in your garage. Anything that 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 you want to showcase for all of us would be wonderful, and we will be welcoming it with open arms.
So and and I think I think that we're talking about being on the common, bring your own chair. BYOC.
Yeah, we will be announcing over the social media, the town website and the like.
Okay.
Oh, you can dance. No chairs.
No, nobody wants.
There's also.
How will that work? Go ahead, Steve. I'll go ahead next.
No, there there was also some conversation, little conversation, but but about um having a couple bands come that 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 would do it for money and have local businesses sponsor them per per ev- per twice, twice a month, you know, two Saturdays a month.
Yeah, yeah.
One 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 band, one band told me he would do it for um five hundred dollars for the gig, four hundred if he was allowed to drink while he was there. That's that's a whole different conversation.
Which we're not allowing on that.
No, I know. So it's going to be five hundred dollars. So now anybody out there, the the fee is five hundred dollars.
Steve, Roger, you're up.
Can I just throw a suggestion out?
Always.
Shepherd Hill has a band that's wins competitions.
Yep.
You know, I don't, you know, it's extremely talented.
Yeah.
And their show choir they have.
I already reached out to them. They're very excited. Yeah.
Put on some wonderful performances. And again, they they're the best in New England for show choir, and I believe the band is the best in New England in maybe.
See, that's a great, that 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 could be a fundraiser or that's.
They are uh both, the school is a wonderful source of, I don't want to say free music.
Talent.
No, talent, and this is, we want to showcase a talent, you know, and what better than the children? Yeah, I reach out to the school already.
The stepping.
The step dancing.
So that you might get some, shall I say, free entertainment.
That that could, that could be a fundraiser for Bay Path at that point for for them. Yeah.
I mean, it it, you know, the band is top-notch in show choir.
But but we only on the common, we have the gazebo, so you have to fit.
Well, no, you can fit it on the on the length of the common.
You have to put rises off for show choir.
I'm going to beg you guys not to talk about logistics tonight.
You got us going, okay?
Really good idea. No, Roger, no, Roger. It is a very good point, Roger.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. All right, so Selectperson Zarowski, you're going to handle that for us. Thank you. Next favorite, town boundary perambulation. Andrew, you want to talk about this or do you want me to?
Sure, I got it. So every five years, two or more selectmen or their designated are required by law to locate town boundaries and record uh with the Board of Selectmen and the town clerk, the boundary markers they were able to find and those that they were not. There are no records showing that the town has ever done this in the past. Chairman Barowski asked for this item to be added. Should the board move forward uh and set dates and times to meet and locate such markers, we'd be happy to notify the adjoining towns as well. We have a, now, a whole book of information on boundary lines for your use available in my office exclusively. I would recommend no more than two select persons and any persons on the board who would like to have.
Then it's a meeting.
That is a meeting.
We're looking for a boundary, though. If we don't find it.
Technically speaking.
They'll have to make it.
We should know. So two.
So I personally would love to do this, but if like, if like other people want to do it, that's fine. I don't care.
No, I will not do it.
All right. Steve, Patsy, do you do 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 you care if it's just me and Basha working on?
Nope.
And oh, and Mary Dublin, Dublin wants to come apparently.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you.
If I bow out, you.
Yeah, if you need me, just let me know.
Cool. All right.
Yeah, if you if you need an ATV with a chainsaw in the front.
That might definitely. All right, Andrew, I'll talk to Basha.
I'm willing to bet you're going to need that.
Guaranteed, yeah. So I'll schedule that with you, with Basha and Mary. We'll figure it out. Thank you all. Again, we continue to do well on our, I said eight fifteen by end of night. We're doing it. Next up, the request for the per diem animal control officer. That's why Chief Dowd is still here.
Well, let me, I'll 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 prime you up. So as you're aware, Anne Salou recently retired from her position as ACO, which she held for over twenty years. Um, the town has experienced some significant residential growth over that time, and the police department is continually receiving more and more complaints about dogs, cats, livestock and wildlife. Uh, during Anne's tenure, Kelly Flynn, who is also Oxford's full-time ACO, regularly covered for Anne in a part-time on-call capacity. And luckily enough, Kelly has agreed to stay on to assist and has been a wonderful asset to the town. Uh, with the transition in the full-time position, we're looking to add one additional part-time on-call ACO to cover during vacations, time offs or or illness. Uh, we believe that hiring the additional ACO would enhance public safety and make caring for quarantined animals much easier. And Chief Dowd is here to answer any questions you have about the request.
My only question, Chief, it's, you could have just yelled it, but that's fine. This is just per diem, right? We're not talking. So basically, if 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 someone's on vacay, we have a backup.
Basically, the other thing is Kelly Flynn does a great job, as you mentioned, she's also full-time employed in Oxford. So it's it's unfair for us not to cover our own responsibility in our animal control offices around the town. We got real, I got real lucky. We all got real lucky with Anne. She she was here for dozens of years in a quarantine. I mean, it was just, I'm not going to find somebody like that that's into it at three o'clock in the morning getting a uh a phone call about, you know, a loose cat or something. You know, it's it's nice to have one more person. Ideally, I'd like to get somebody already trained, but that's unlocked in this.
Chief, you add me on this one. Add hello. We actually, just the, based upon the forty-five square miles, we absolutely need someone to be able to come out and 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 help. Again, I I don't know how the board feels, but.
Too, is sometimes it's like a loose horse or something. I mean, I'm tying up my guys. Or I need, you know, they need an additional animal control officer. That would be something else that they could assist with if that's a two-man job.
I love our town. Like, just the fact we actually have a discussion around, we might have a loose horse. That's fantastic.
More cows and the bears.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's, I'm I'm sure, yeah, it's, that's almost going to lead to uh body cameras for, just for that. I'm sorry. So 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 in the past, though, so so Kelly would come from Oxford and not and not charge us, it would it would be a.
She gets a small stipend to be ours, and then um the idea is that, you know, if ours is unavailable, then she can come in. We need two people. I try to likewise, we get a reciprocate. When another community needs help, we try to send our people so just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Another opportunity.
Yeah, okay.
It's a lot more paperwork than it used to be as far as, you know, there's a lot of, like, I mean, dollars to do it and.
Oh, yeah.
So it's just.
Can imagine.
So I believe we would be requesting a motion to approve the request for the per diem ACO.
Can I, I'd like to make a motion to add one additional part-time on-call ACO to cover during vacations, time off and or illness.
Motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Dan, you good? You good? All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you much. Be good on that one. Um, one of my favorite things to do, we need to declare surplus furniture. This ranks up there with uh poll hearings.
Don't you kind of want those though?
And as you're aware, we have some nice new furniture in here, and so we've uh been taking up some valuable space in our basement. Holding the the old ones. Obviously, not the most comfortable things in the world. Uh, maybe that's the reason why nobody comes here anymore and listens to us.
That's not why. But they're beautiful.
Why is everyone looking at me when you say that?
I've had multiple children fall asleep on these benches, so maybe there's some personal value.
There you go. So hopefully, we can actually make uh make some of our money back on them that from the eighteen hundreds when we spent probably a nickel buying each one of them. So I'm just asking the board uh to declare them surplus property so that we can move in that direction.
Got a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Do I have a second?
What what happens to them?
Uh, we sell, we put them out to bid and.
Can I have a second for discussion first?
I'm sorry.
I second for discussion. I'm just curious what happened. That that was really actually kind of beautiful. I like the.
There's all law, there's there's a whole, there's a whole law behind it.
No, no, I know, you're like, I get the whole bit of the process. All right, never mind that.
They'll go to the highest bidder that comes and picks them.
But we don't, we don't have any other location in town that needs like the the arts.
There is actually already some over at number two Schoolhouse. We actually did offer them out to any department who wanted to pick them up and all have declined, including the.
That was my point.
I may put a bid on 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 one myself. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. That is unanimous. Thank you much. So old business, we are done. Unless there's any other old business anybody wants to talk about?
Nope.
We're good. Thank you. BS Committee reports, we don't have any. Uh, Andrew, do we have any policies? I don't think we do.
No.
Thank you. You want to talk TA goals? I'm sorry, I take that back. I do not want to talk that right now. Because we'll talk about that next time when David's here. Uh, let's do Town Administration Report.
All righty.
If you give me the thirty-second elevator speech, I'll make everybody happy.
Really quick, so we did submit a grant application for best practice grant, uh basically asking for two things. One of them was a cleanup of the of some of the sites around Route Twenty to kind of hopefully spur additional economic development growth around that area. And also another one to continue our um investment in um safety improvements around town. So we have, I have a couple, I've submitted those to the state. We'll see how those turn out. Also additional to safety, I did sign the town up as a partner with the Safe Roots to School Program. Essentially, this is a grant opportunity if, as long as the schools participate in it. They'll do some audits of like pickup times to make sure that they're safe as possible and and provide recommendations. Essentially, once you are involved at least six months, then it opened up, it opens up the opportunity for grants up to two million dollars in infrastructure improvement grants um in proximity to schools to improve uh walkability and and the like. As I kept the board up to date on, we did have the issue with the Town Hall drain issue um with the enormous amount of rain that we had the last few uh last few weeks. Um, really just want to thank Kurt. Uh, he really stepped up and kind of came in, diagnosed the issue, called the people that needed to be contacted to get the, to limit the impact to the senior center. Because essentially, we couldn't serve meals until we had this issue resolved. We had it done in under a week. Insurance is reviewing it and could potentially be fully covered. And and then just just update the board on the radio system. We have officially ordered the dispatch consoles. We originally was part of the public safety building project. We did have to pull it in under the radio system project because it was our number one issue. It's still running on Windows XP at this point. And um so now that we've gone forward with that, now we're looking at doing the um any improvements to the actual radio system coverage. So um Chief Dowd, Chief Knopf, they, we've all been working together to try to move this forward. So.
Anything else?
Uh, that's all I got.
And the second, the second half of that expenditure is due on, is will come up this this fall meeting, I expect.
That will, this is, so one thing I'll 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 kind of prime into is, and I have to have this conversation with Finance Committee is as we're getting our American Recovery Act money in, that's, you know, over four million dollars. I'm putting together a draft plan to present to Finance Committee for discussion. That will come here. I don't necessarily believe it needs an appropriation, but we should at least go through some public process to ensure that we are, you know, not doing this in complete secrecy of what we're going to use the American Recovery Act money for. But one of the main top uh issues I would propose is that we essentially look to allocate almost eight hundred thousand dollars of that money toward the radio system upgrade. is that we essentially look to allocate almost $100,000 of that money toward the radio system upgrades because it would fall under, under, um, uh, public health and safety, under that, that benchmark.
Like actually what it's designed for.
Exactly.
Yeah, wasn't a year ago, but now, no, no, that's good. Good job. Good job. Thank you.
Only other thing to put you on the spot, any news on the Brookfield Road Bridge?
It's wide open.
Exactly. That was my softball to Andrew.
Not, not wide. It's, it's, it's...
It's narrow open.
There's still a little, yeah, there's still a little work needs to get done, so please drive safely. But, you know, kudos to everyone that was involved. I know it was a major inconvenience for a lot of folks, but I'm glad to see that it's, that it's back to open.
Oh, interesting. Just one more.
Please be careful. Go ahead.
Just one last thing. So we did have our tax title auction today. Um, only two properties did not sell, but the town netted, uh, $280,000 in net revenue.
That's awesome. Well done. Cool. All right. Uh, any other business unknown in town posting anybody wants to talk about?
I have a quick comment. When we were here doing kind of the old home day stuff behind the scenes, um, we kind of got to see the building empty and we had, you know, to, to, we had to grab things, store things. And there's a lot of junk lying around this building, like old office chairs. We went into a room, a big room, and we always complain about space. It, it was, it was like, um, it didn't have drywall on it. It was, it was, um, like, perfect office size or of storage. There's tons and tons of junk, old wood, old, just old, tons and tons of, it was, it was long.
For the veterans' office.
Like 20 feet long, 10 feet, what, that, you don't know who I'm talking about, right?
With the...
The veterans' office, where the, the person through...
And, and...
At the end of the hall. Yes. So just tons of storage junk.